Thank you, Nicole. Can you hear me all right?
Slight echo.
Slide.
I can hear you.
I can do about that. Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is Chairman Jesse Geller. Before we begin, I will confirm that all members and other persons anticipated to participate on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Johanna Schneider.
Yes.
Saul Feldman.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Nicole Perre.
Here.
And do we have Mr. Campbell or are you Mr. Campbell tonight?
I'm Mr. Campbell tonight.
Excellent. All speakers should identify themselves by name prior to speaking. This hearing of the ZBA in open session is being conducted remotely and in a manner that is consistent with the legislature's extension of provision initially made by March 12th, 2020 Executive Order of the Governor concerning the now expired state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. This body is authorized to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate public access is provided. Adequate public access does not include public participation unless that participation is required by law. This hearing will or may feature public comment. For this hearing, the ZBA is convening by video conference through Zoom, as posted on the town's calendar, which identifies how the public may access the hearing. Be advised that this hearing is and that some attendees may be participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that others may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website and attached to this hearing invitation. The hearing will follow the agenda unless I note otherwise. Finally, before turning to the agenda, I will cover some ground rules that will permit clear and effective conduct of our business and help to ensure accurate hearing minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I'll invite each member by name to provide any comment, question, or motion. Please hold your own until your name is called. Please also remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking and to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Before responding, please wait until the floor is yielded to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in sidebar conversation with other members, please do so through me. Finally, each vote taken in this hearing will be conducted by roll call vote. For any public comment component of this hearing, I will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify themselves by name and address only. I will call on each by name. Please enter your name into the chat section. You will find the chat icon on the bottom of your screen. Click on this icon and the chat window will appear on the right. Our host, Nicole, will queue members in the order in which their request is received. Additionally, we will ask if members of the public who are calling in would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to. Okay, so our first matter for this evening is a request for a time extension pursuant to 760 CMR 56.05 sub three. This involves property at 1223 Beacon Street. This is a 40B comprehensive permit application. And I understand that the applicant's here to request to continue the hearing to July 31st, 2025 and extend the deadline to close the hearing until January 27th, 2026. Does anybody, is anybody here to make that formal request? Or are we just doing it?
I believe Jennifer DePaso Gilbert.
Excellent.
I'm actually not on for that.
Oh.
You want to be on for that, Jennifer?
You know, sure, let's continue it. Let's, let's continue it. Yes, happy to, happy to.
July 31st, 2025. And the deadline to close is January 27th, 2026?
Yes, that would be the, the six months. Yep.
I so moved. Thank you. I so moved, Johanna.
Aye.
And Saul?
I.
Great. Granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. See you in a little bit.
See ya. Okay. Our first 48 case this evening. This involves property at 6 York Terrace. This case was actually originally opened January 9th, 2025 and was continued to today's date. This is case number 202400057. And this is an application to construct an addition, expanding nonconformities. Tonight's hearing will be in the following order. We'll first hear the applicant's presentation. We'll then from here from anyone who wants to speak in favor of this application, then from anyone in opposition. We'll hear the planning board and planning department reports, and then we'll hear any recommendation from the building department. The board members, board members will lastly deliberate and give their decision. If you do wish to offer testimony this evening, we ask that you start by giving us your name and your address. And again, for the record, my name's Jesse Geller and I'm seated this evening with Johanna Schneider and Saul Feldman. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
I am Mr. Chair.
Mr. Allen, nice to see you.
Nice to see you too.
Waive reading of notice.
I will, thank you.
Thanks.
For the record, Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Robert Allen. I have a lot pressed at 300 Washington Street in Brookline Village. You'll be happy to know I'm just one and done tonight and turning the rest of cases over to my very capable and much smarter partner, Jennifer DePaso Gilbert. But this, I'm very excited to be here for this case. On with me tonight are the homeowners, Leah Sumari and Colleen Sullivan and Leah's parents Wendy Drobnik and Steve Sumari. And just in case you were thinking of denial, we also brought two children with us, a two-year-old and a seven-month-old, and you can imagine the traumatic effect a denial would have on their future lives, Mr. Chairman. So Leah grew up in, in the home at 6 York Terrace. Leah and her wife, Colleen, recently bought the house from Leah's parents, Wendy and Steve. So the house is now shared by Leah, Colleen, Wendy, Steve, and the two, and the two children. As you can imagine, it's, it's a pretty full house. And I think the grandparents would like their own little space. So we decided, you know, it's funny, they originally called and we were looking at an ADU. And then they considered a conversion because they were in an S7. Then we went back to an ADU because the ADU bylaw changed. Then I have concerns that the Attorney General won't accept this ADU bylaw. So we went back to saying, hey, let's just do a single-family home, have the parents living down the basement, kids living upstairs. No kitchen down the basement, they'll share a kitchen, they have a little wet bar down there. And you know, the grandparents love it, they're, they're in the same house, they, you know, it's, it's, it's all good. And you know, from, from an economic standpoint, it probably makes more sense, you know, if converting to a two, the taxes would go up. ADU, they were afraid the taxes would go up and, and you know, I've said this many times, living in Brookline is always a challenge. So to find like sort of intergenerational way of living in town, I think is great, right? It's, it's what we hope for in the town and I think it's really cool. I think Peter Sacks is our architect, oh no. It looks like we have Freda Ariano is our architect here tonight if, if you need him. But basically, we're, this is going to be a section six, we're already over. We're asking to do a little bump out, which it's only 171 square feet, but it actually really helps out down the basement, it's a basement in first floor. It'll give a little extra space for the grandparents downstairs. It's really been a great project to be part of. 6 York Terrace is located in SC7, single-family zoning district. The neighborhood is a mix of one and two families. The zoning relief required is modest relates to the increase in the pre-existing non-conforming FAR by the conversion of the unfinished basement and a one-story addition on the rear of the house that extends into the basement space. The maximum, maximum allowed FAR is .35, the existing is .50. The proposed is .52, so it's a .02 increase, 171 square feet. The lot is also pre-existing non-conforming, required is 7,000, it's 6,084. Minimum lot width, which requires 65, the existing is 429. And the front yard setback, 20 feet's required and it's only at 13.8. So this proposal doesn't affect any of those nonconformities and doesn't create any new nonconformities. The planning board loved this proposal, was unanimously supportive of it. And you should have received four letters of support from 15 York Terrace, 30 York Terrace, 22 York Terrace, and 104 Summit Ave, who wrote, approve the changes wholeheartedly, which I always like to hear. So we do have the architect here, but I'm happy to move things along. If, if you want to move things along, I'm not sure if you want to see 171 square foot bump out or are you ready to move on? I'll leave it to you and the board, Mr. Chair.
I do not need to see the plans, let me ask my fellow board members, Johanna?
I have already reviewed the plans, I don't need to see them any further.
Thank you. Saul?
Yeah, I agree, I agree, I agree. We're great.
Go ahead, Bob.
So if I jump into it, we're requesting a finding under Chapter 48, Section 6 to allow for the increase of a pre-existing non-conforming FAR. As I said, it's at .50 and the allowed is .35. Under Diedrich, the ZBA may allow for an extension of a pre-existing nonconformity as long as no new nonconformities are created and there's no substantial detriment to the neighborhood. This board in the past has used the standards under 9.05 to look at, to review detriment. And I would suggest to you, the specific site is appropriate location. Property is located in a residential neighborhood, it'll continue to be residential. Use will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The additions in the rear, streetscape doesn't change at all, neighbors are supportive of it. No nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, there's no change to, to the driveway on this circulation on this site. Adequate appropriate facilities will be provided and the development will not affect the supply of housing for low and moderate income people. I suggest to you, it's a way, it's the way of the future that people need to live in Brookline. It's expensive town to live in and families staying together is a good thing, right? So we'd ask that for a finding under 48, Section 6, happy to answer any questions.
Sure. You've reviewed the conditions?
Don't have them right here. No, was there?
You're all right, well.
Was there a counterbalancing amenity?
No, no, I looked for it, I didn't see it.
Okay. I see that my last page didn't print out or I left it in the printer, so.
Well, you'll hear them in a minute anyway.
Okay, I'll listen.
I don't have any other questions, Johanna?
I would just point out about the conditions, there is a suggested condition that if the amended tree protection bylaw goes into effect, a tree protection plan must be submitted. Mr. Allen, are you okay with that condition?
We, we're okay with that condition.
Okay.
I think we have no choice, right? If it's in effect, it's in effect.
Well, right, I'd.
Are you asking us to take it down before it goes into effect? Because that's going to be my recommendation.
I am not making that suggestion.
I know you're not. I am.
Saul, any questions?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Good. Let, from the planning board and planning department, or let's first see if anybody wishes to speak. Nicole, do we have anybody in favor of or in opposition to?
No, we do not.
Great, okay, let's hear your report and.
Yes, so good evening, I'm Nicole Perre, the zoning coordinator for the town of Brookline. Planning staff finds the relief requested to be minimal. The planning board also agrees the relief is minimal and voted unanimously to support the proposal. The board was concerned about the damage to the tree located close to the proposed excavation. Therefore, they're suggesting the amended, if the amended tree protection bylaw goes into effect prior to the issuance of a building permit, that the board recommended tree protection plan be submitted to protect that tree. So therefore, the planning board recommended approval of the site plan by Joseph R. Porter, PLS dated April 16th, 2024, and the architectural plans by Peter Satches, RA dated September 25th, 2024, subject to the following conditions. One, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant electronically submit a final floor plan and elevations stamped and signed by registered architect and a final site plan stamped and signed by registered engineer or land surveyor to the director for regulatory planning for review and approval. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the amended tree, if the amended tree protection bylaw goes into effect, a tree protection plan shall be submitted. And three, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit to the building commissioner for review and approval, a site plan, floor plan, and elevations with the approval stamp for the director for regulatory planning and evidence the board decision was obtained from the town clerk's office and recorded at the registry of deeds.
Thank you, Nicole, and building department?
Yes, the building department issued a letter from Paul R. Campbell today and says the building department has no objections to the requested relief and will work with the petitioner to ensure compliance with the zoning bylaw board decision and applicable code.
Thank you. Okay, board members deliberation and decision, let's start with you, Saul.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good, I'm ready to vote on it. I'm in favor.
You're in favor, thank you. Johanna?
Um, I would commend the applicant and the architect for finding a clever way of generating some additional square footage for this family in this pre-existing non-conforming home. When I look at the requested relief, it is incredibly modest. Most of the areas of relief are pre-existing non-conforming and are staying exactly that way. There is a slight uptick in FAR, but it is incredibly small. And based on where the addition is going to be located, I do not think that these changes make the the structure substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. In addition, I do find the argument that the project complies with the 9.05 special permit criteria to be compelling. And I also appreciate the fact that there are numerous letters of neighbor support in the record which support the application. For those reasons, I would vote in favor.
Thank you. And I agree with everything Johanna has said. It is modest, it meets the requirements under Section 905. I frankly find no detriment, let alone substantial detriment. So it is a unanimous determination under 48, Section 6.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Our next case is case number 20240059. This is an application to construct an addition, expanding new non-conformity, this is at 14 Rangeley Road. Again, for the record, I'm Jesse Geller. I'm seated with Johanna Schneider and Saul Feldman. Tonight's hearing will be in the following order, we'll hear the applicant's presentation. We'll hear from anyone who wants to speak in favor of this application, if there is anyone. We'll hear from anyone who wants to speak in opposition, if there is anyone. We will then hear from the planning board and planning department, and then we'll hear from the building department. If they have any recommendations, lastly, the board will deliberate and give its decision. If you wish to offer testimony, we ask that you speak slowly, clearly, and start by giving us your name and your address. And who's here on behalf of this applicant?
Jennifer DePaso Gilbert, here on behalf of the owners, RL.
Will you waive the reading?
I will waive the reading.
Thank you, please go ahead.
Yes, here on behalf of the owners, RL and Gwen Garben. And also on with me is the architect Ralph Kilfoy. This property is located at 14 Rangeley Road. It's in the S15 zoning district. The neighborhood is mostly single-family homes, many much larger than this particular home. It's a beautiful house that was built in 1945. The proposal before you is to construct a 500-square-foot addition to the rear of the home with a 500-square-foot basement below for a total increase to the GFA of 1,000 square feet. Because of the topography, the slopes down, the entire addition is in the rear. And it's not very visible from the front. It preserves the streetscape, which is very important to both the planning board and preservation on these more historic homes. It's really a first-floor addition with a walkout basement below because of the topography. The proposal needs a finding under Section 6 for pre-existing non-conforming FAR and a slight nonconformity for the rear yard. The rear yard currently required is 40 feet, it's existing at 31.76. It's proposed at 30.42 for the addition. And then with respect to the GFA, it's currently a pre-existing non-conforming at .361 and it's proposed to go to .418. So we would request a finding under Section 6. We do have the architect, if anybody needs to see the plans, but they were submitted. Would you like the architect to go through the plans?
I looked at them online, let me ask my fellow board members, Johanna?
I have also reviewed them, I don't need to see them again.
Saul?
No, I'm good, I'm good, I think this meets Section 6.
Okay, well, thank you, then I'll just go right into the standards. I, I know the board likes to use the special permit criteria in 905. The site is appropriate for the particular use, it's located in a residential neighborhood. And the, and the proposed addition is not changing in that use. It will not adversely affect the neighborhood, there's no change to the use. The proposed addition is to the rear of the home, which preserves the streetscape. The planning board did provide unanimous support. And the most impacted abutters have no objection, you should have several letters of support which were filed. I will say that the owner did a great job reaching out to all of, all of the neighbors on this and we haven't heard of any opposition, just support. There's no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, there's no proposed change to site circulation or an increase of vehicles or residents at the house. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation and the development will not have any effect on the supply of housing available for low and moderate income people. So I would ask you to grant the Section 6 special permit, thank you so much.
Thank you. Board members, any questions at this point, Johanna?
No questions, thank you.
Saul?
I don't have any questions.
Great, thank you. Nicole, do we have anyone here who wants to speak in favor or in opposition?
No, we do not.
Great, planning board, planning department reports?
Yes, so the planning staff finds that the 15% increase in FAR will not substantially, be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. In addition, the, the addition mostly follows the setbacks of the existing structure with the exception of a slight decrease in the rear yard setback less than two feet. The planning board voted unanimously to support the requested relief and agrees with staff's findings that the addition is unlikely to be detrimental to the neighborhood. Therefore, the planning board recommended approval of the site plan by Delork, Delork, Dorco Associates dated October 16th, 2024, and the architectural plans by RDK Architects dated October 18th, 2024, subject to the following conditions. One, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit final floor plans, elevation stamped and signed by a registered architect, and a final site plan stamped and signed by a registered engineer or land surveyor to the director for regulatory planning or designated for review and approval. And two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit to the building commissioner for review and approval, the site plan, floor plans, and elevations with the approval stamp of the director for regulatory planning and evidence the board of appeal decision was obtained from the town clerk's office by the representative and recorded at the registry of deeds.
Thank you, Nicole, and recommendations from the building department?
Yes, I have a memo here from Paul R. Campbell regarding 14 Rangeley Road. He writes that the department will have no objection to the requested relief and will work with the petitioner to ensure compliance with the zoning bylaw.
Yay, board members deliberation and decision, Johanna?
Um, taking a look at this, it is the case that it's a rather substantial increase in FAR and a much smaller increase in the nonconformity with respect to the rear yard setback. However, because of the topography of the site that Jennifer described and that we can see on the plans, the addition will not be particularly visible from the street. It will be shielded by existing tree cover from the rear butters. And we've seen several letters of support from neighboring properties. And so I am comfortable making a finding that this proposed expansion will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure.
Thank you, Saul.
Yeah, I, I agree, it satisfies the Section 6 standard and also it meets Section 9.05. So I, I'm, I'm good with this. And, you know.
So I agree with my fellow board members, I think it warrants a finding under 48, Section 6. I think the key is, as Johanna says, the topography, so there is at best minimal visibility, though the planning board report indicates there is no visibility. It is a large addition. And as we interpret substantial detriment through our bylaw Section 905, I think it meets the applicable standards. So therefore, it is a unanimous finding under 48, Section 6.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next case is case number 20240062. It's an application to demolish a building requiring design review and a special permit. This involves property at 678 Brookline Avenue. Again, for the record, I'm Jesse Geller and I'm with Johanna Schneider and Saul Feldman. Tonight's hearing will be in the following order, we'll hear the applicant's presentation. We'll hear from anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application, then from anyone in opposition. We will then hear the planning board and planning department reports, and then we will hear the building department recommendation. Lastly, the board will deliberate and give its decision. If you want to offer testimony this evening, we ask that you speak loudly and clearly and start by giving us your name and address. Jennifer, will you waive reading of the notice?
Yes, Jennifer DePaso Gilbert here, and I will waive the reading of the notice.
Thank you, I feel like I've heard a similar case to this.
You have, you had, you, you heard two similar cases, which were the nearby two mechanic shops on Brookline Ave, which were granted the required special permits to demo, and it's the same thing. So I'm really excited actually to be here this evening with Matt Johnson and Bill Lovett from Claremont Properties. Claremont Properties has been trying to compile these lots. They built the Hilton Garden Inn on the corner. This is the Emerald Island Special District. It's located also in the underlying zoning, which is the industry, only industrial district in town. And under the Emerald Island Special District, if you compile a minimum of 13,600 square feet, you can take advantage of increases to the density, some additional uses and heights. And so they were able to get the two mechanic shops. They demoed those, they got the relief required in 2022, Jesse, you sat on that case. And now they've acquired the old vet site, which is now vacant. It was found not significant by the Preservation Commission in October of 2024. And because this fronts and is 100 feet near Brookline Ave, it does require design review. We went to the planning board and they were unanimously supportive on the idea to demo it, to fill it with some gravel, fence it off as we go forward and start coming up with what could be a really exciting project there on the Emerald Island. We've been working with DPW because the site is rather complicated with the utilities on Brookline Ave and some water lines and other easements that run through the property. DPW has been working with us to figure out how to deal with those issues. And then, of course, this will be a major impact project eventually that will require a design advisory team and we'll go back to the planning board for several or more meetings and then come to you under the overlay district for the needed special permit. But tonight, we're really just here to get your okay to demo. I want to have, if you'd like, I can have Matt Johnson bring up, we took some pictures of the site, but if you're familiar with it, we don't even need to do that. I would say that it meets the criteria for a special permit since under design review, this specific site will be appropriate for this use. It is an industrial zone, it's going to be temporary, temporarily closed off for safety. The use is not going to adversely affect the neighborhood. In, in fact, it'll be a less intensive use just as an open lot. There won't be any serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians because there will no, there's no longer a vet use there, so nobody's coming and going. So actually, it'll be safer than it was before when it was a busy vet facility. And adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided, we tend to, we're going to gravel it over and put some nice fencing up. There'll be no, we agree with the condition proposed of no overnight parking. And this will not affect the supply of housing available. Eventually, we hope to have some beautiful housing units there. But for now, it was never a housing, so it won't have any impact on housing.
Thank you, Jennifer. Board members, questions? Let's start with you, Saul.
Yeah, what's the end, what's the end game here? You want housing units there, how many, give, give me a feel for it, how many housing units?
Yeah, we don't have that number, Saul, so what we're doing is we've just engaged. Yeah, we don't have that number, Saul. So what we're doing is we've just engaged with an architect and we're gonna uh, come up with some massing and design plans and then work with the planning department to see what the best appropriate use there is. What we're looking at though, is a total um, site. If you add all three parcels together, there's sixteen thousand nine hundred and nine square feet to work with. So there'll be housing above and on the ground floor, some commercial. How much? We really don't know yet. We've just engaged the architect and what we're doing right now is preliminarily working with the Department of Public Works to figure out all the utilities in the street and the various water and sewer lines. And uh, so, so no uh, numbers for you, no more details than that. What we want tonight is the board to grant a special permit to allow the demolition of that old vet building.
Yeah. Okay, um, you know, uh, uh, the shortage of housing, as we all know in Brookline. So there's no way you can come up with a, with a, a estimate. I won't hold you to it.
Oh, well, it's, it's, it's gonna be dozens. Let's put it that way. So it'll be
Like.
Like, we're, we're gonna trigger. We're gonna trigger um, the affordable housing requirements, so there'll be some onsite affordable housing and there'll likely could be a hybrid where we give some
Yeah.
some payment to the housing trust, but I can't give you any numbers, but it'll be significant.
Okay, is, is it gonna be retail on the first floor?
We're looking at that. Yeah, there has to be some commercial on the first floor. Not sure what'll, what that'll be yet.
So commercials, some commercial in the first floor, housing above, and, and, and what's, what's the parking situation?
Um, excuse me.
Thanks.
The applicant's here for a special permit to demolish the structure. I, I, I think we're extending well beyond what the purpose of this hearing is and frankly, what is within the purview of.
Okay, okay. Okay, I'll, I'll, um, I'm in favor of it, Jesse.
Okay, thank you. Um, questions, Johanna?
Not right now.
Great. Okay, I don't have any questions. Jennifer, you've answered uh, what few I did have. Um, Nicole? And board members, I assume if I don't hear from you, you don't need to see the presentation or the photos.
No need.
Right.
Nicole, Planning Board, Planning Department? Or i- is there anybody here to speak in favor of or in opposition to?
No, there is not.
So Planning Board, Planning Department?
Yep. Planning staff is supportive of the proposal, especially since the Preservation Commission determined that the existing building and garage are not historically significant. Furthermore, the applicant outlined reasonable steps to secure the site and ensure that it will be not, not be visually detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. The details of the permanent fence surrounding the lot shall be submitted for review and approval. Plants and planters should be installed and maintained at the front of the property to make the lot look more attractive while it remains vacant. The applicant has not stated whether the site will be used for parking cars and should clarify this for the planning board. The planning board um, voted on this and had no issues with the relief thought for the demolition and acknowledged that they would see the future development plans for review. Therefore, they recommended approval of the site plan by Michael Pazuzzi. PLS dated May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, subject to the following conditions. One, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit final site plan stamped and signed by a registered engineer or land surveyor to the director for regulatory planning for review and approval. The final site plan shall show all existing easements on the subject property. And two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, permit, a landscaping and fencing plan shall be submitted to the director for regulatory planning for review and approval. Three, no overnight parking shall be allowed on the site while it's undeveloped unless a new application is submitted to the Board of Appeals. And number four, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit to the building commissioner for review and approval, a site plan displaying the approval stamp of the director for regulatory planning and evidence the board of appeals decision was obtained from the town clerk's office by the applicant and recorded at the registered deeds. And for the building department report, um, the billing department has no objection to the requested relief. I'll work with the petitioner to ensure compliance with the zoning bylaw or decision and applicable codes.
Thank you. Board member deliberation decision, and I'll just jump in.
Um, I think. See, may I ask a question of Nicole, who unfortunately is wearing the Paul Campbell hat tonight? Um, and she may or may not know the answer to this question. Is, uh, so I'm gonna try to refrain from commentary on this, but it seems very bizarre to me that this board is being asked to grant a special permit for a demolition. When I looked at the zoning bylaw, it requires design review and a special permit for things that require a building permit. I don't necessarily view a demolition permit as a building permit, and I'm wondering if we if that's how we interpret this. I don't, I can't even believe this is before this board. Sorry, I know I said I would refrain from commentary, but here I am.
I believe any demolition that's not associated with the new construction requires a special permit.
Alteration to a structure.
But we're not altering a structure. There is no structure here. This is just demolition.
One can, you, one can argue demolition is an alteration of a structure.
Yeah, I think it is. I think it is.
Okay. Again, of, of all of the things that this board is asked to review, I think this is the stupidest way ever been asked.
I, I theoretically agree with you, Johanna, but having seen this exact case twice before, I think this is how the building department interprets this section.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, okay. So.
And I have no objection to the requested relief.
Good. Um, I, I think it meets the requirements for special permit under section nine point oh five for the reasons read into the record by counsel for the applicant. Um, I think what it essentially hinges on um, in particular is securing the site for safety purposes and we rely upon fencing and they're doing all of these things to um, reduce it to no activity, secure the site, isolate it. So that's what we rely upon to meet section nine oh five. Saul?
Yeah, I think it meets the standards of section six, so I'm in, and nine oh five, so I'm in favor.
Great. Anything further, Johanna, or are you, good?
No, I'm, I am in favor of the request of, grant of the request.
So it's unanimous grant of the relief requested. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next and final case is case number twenty twenty-four zero zero sixty-five. This is application to construct dormers expanding existing non-conformities at one thirty-nine Columbia Street. Again, for the record, I'm Jesse Geller. I'm seated this evening with Johanna Schneider and Saul Feldman. We'll first hear the applicant's presentation. We'll hear from anyone who wants to speak in favor of the application, then from anyone in opposition, if there is anyone. We'll then hear the planning board and planning department reports and uh, then hear the building department recommend, recommendation. The board will finally deliberate and give its decision. If you want to offer your testimony, we ask that you start by giving us your name and your address. Speak slowly and clearly. Jennifer, will you waive reading the notice?
Yes, I will waive reading of the notice. I am Jennifer Depazzo Gilbert and I am here on behalf of the owners Jeff Dur and um, Amy Huang. Uh, this is a property located at one thirty-nine Columbia Street. It's in the T five North Harvard District. The lot is seven thousand six hundred and fifty-seven square feet. Uh, this is a family that um, has been living at, at this two-family home for many, many years. They have a lot of support from their neighbors. Um, they really spent a lot of time talking to folks that were going to be most impacted. And you've got um, a couple of really great letters of support from those that are, would be the most impacted here. Um, speaking about how wonderful the family is and how uh, this is them deciding to invest in the neighborhood to keep the family in this home, but expand it because um, Amy and, and Jeff are gonna start a family and they want to uh, be in the same home and have the grandparents in the, in the second unit. So what this is, is a section six case because the pre-existing non-conformities that will be expanded um, apply to the usable open space because we're increasing the FAR by adding several uh, dormers so that the second floor is more livable. And the total uh, square feet that we're proposing here is to create an additional thirteen hundred and ten square feet, which would add three new bedrooms and two new bathrooms uh, for the upper units. There's also a gut renovation going on of the first and second floors, which will modernize uh, the kitchen, bring it up to more living standards, add a nice living room, dining room area. They also decided to keep the brick exterior and change out the vinyl siding um, to replace, be replaced with cedar. Uh, the new dormers will also be clad in cedar and the dormers um, uh, uh, come out about to the eight-foot setback. Right now, existing conditions in the side yard, you've got a five point eight foot. That remains the same. Uh, the dormers are pushed into eight. It's a requirement of ten. So that's why the, the, the um, special permit under six is required for that particular side yard. And then because of the increase in the FAR, uh, the calculations increase for the usable open space. The existing condition is twenty-one percent and we'd be at eighteen percent. Um, and the usable open space requirements are at thirty. So um, we believe that this meets the section uh, six. No substantial detriment to the neighborhood by adding these dormers. Um, the site is a appropriate location for this two-family use. It's not changing, will remain residential. No adverse impact on the neighborhood. Literally just adding three dormers, which gives a lot of extra space to this growing family so that they can all live in this structure together for the foreseeable future and no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles. There's not going to be any change to the site or the circulation uh, for vehicles or um, folks living in the home. And adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided. And the development um, will not have any effect on the supply of housing available for low and moderate income people and is going to allow this family to grow in place with the grandparents um, in the other unit. So it's a good story. Um, we have the architect here also, Talia Canistra. She can pull up the plans if you need her to go through them.
I do not. I have a question for you, Jennifer.
Yes.
Condition number two. Recommend.
Yes.
Do you want to speak to that?
Yes, I, I would, I do not want to have condition number two in. It wasn't in the first section six finding. It's not appropriate to be in there. Um, Polly is old school and she always adds it. I know Polly did this memo. Um, but you know, I will just tell the board so they're aware. There's another case that's currently in, in the courts in litigation. One ninety Ivy Street. And that condition um, was added to that section six case. And the judge um, is really digging into it and questioning whether the counterbalancing amenity of the landscaping was sufficient and whether it meets the zoning. So you know, complicated things in that case shouldn't be in there, and I'd ask that it be uh, removed, although I will say that this owner is very conscientious and has already been talking about putting in some bushes and plantings, but it shouldn't be a condition.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Sure.
Board members, questions? And let me know if you need to hear the architect's design presentation. Let's start with you, Saul.
No, I'm, I'm, I don't have questions. I think this is a a second, satisfied section six of forty-eight and also uh, uh, section nine point oh five, so I'm, I'm, I'm good with the proposal.
Thank you. Johanna?
I have no questions and I also have no need to see the plans, having reviewed them on my own time. Thank you.
Nicole? Do we have anyone in support or in opposition? I know we have others in support.
We do not have anyone present.
Hey, planning board, planning department report?
Yes, the planning staff finds the addition of the dormers at the attic level not to be detrimental to the neighborhood. The proposed finishing of the attic and basement and upgrades to the rest of the house do not trigger FAR relief. The dormers on the right-hand side of the house is setback from the side property line more than the house below. Uh, adding landscaping to the rear is recommended by staff to improve the attractiveness of the property. The planning board agreed with staff that the addition is modest and believes that granting the requested relief will not be significantly detrimental to the neighborhood. Not have significant detriment to the neighborhood. The planning board recommends approval of the site plan by George C. Collins, PLS dated November eighth, twenty twenty-four, and the architectural plans by Talia Canestra RA dated June twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty twenty-four, subject to the following conditions. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit final floor plans and elevation stamped and signed by a registered architect and a final site plan stamped and signed by a registered engineer or land surveyor to the director for regulatory planning for review and approval. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit a landscape plan subject to review, review and approval of the director for regulatory planning or designate. The counterbalance amenities must be executed in accordance with the approved plan. And three, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit to the building commissioner for review and approval, the site plan, floor plans and elevation, displaying the approval stamp of the director for regulatory planning and evidence the board of appeals decision was obtained from the uh, applicant at the town clerk's office and recorded at the registered deeds.
Thank you, Nicole. Jennifer, I just want to confirm, no new non-conformities, correct?
That is correct.
Great, thank you. Okay, board members. So I think this meets the requirements under forty-eight, section six.
Apologize. I forgot to read the building department recommendations.
Do you want me to guess what it says? Go ahead.
For the record, uh, the billing department has no objection to the requested relief and will work with the petitioner to ensure compliance with the zoning bylaw, board decision and applicable code.
Thank you, Nicole. So I, I think it is, supports finding, a finding under forty-eight, section six. Um, I think as we use our standards under section nine oh five of the zoning bylaw, there is no substantial detriment. Um, and therefore, uh, I am in favor of making the finding. Johanna, I believe you voted confirm?
Uh, I agree with your conclusions um, and would just note that per the earlier discussion with applicant's counsel, we should be removing condition number two. Um, because this is not a five point four three, but rather a section six case.
Yes, I agree with you. Saul, please confirm.
Yeah, it satisfies section six of forty-eight and it complies with section nine point oh five, so I would be in favor of this.
Great, it's a unanimous determination. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you very much. Have a good uh, evening. Good night.
You too. Anything else, Nicole, or have we satisfied our function?
That concludes our business. Thank you.
Thank you, board members.
Okay, thank you, Jesse.
Good night.
Welcome.
Bye.